Good evening, everyone. I'd like to order the regular meeting of the Lather Village City Council. Madam Clerk, will you please do roll call?
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
President.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Canaz.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. I invite everyone in the audience and on Zoom to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Need a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of Action Item D, Tower Direction of Tower.
Oh, please. Can you give me one of those microphones because they're still not having the audio?
Recording in progress.
I know, I know, I know. We'll just kind of make this work until we can get it to work, okay?
So you're ready?
Can you hear us now? Maybe not because I have you on mute. Can you hear us now? Arvin? Thank you. Okay, great. Go ahead.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of Cell Tower, Item D, and the action items of Cell Tower Direction to Staff.
Second?
No, I think before you do that, there's also... Don't you want C off?
Uh, yeah, and also.
Oh, yeah.
Tabling item C.
We also have Senator Moss in before the consent agenda.
Okay, then I'll... I'll just make the motion again. Make the motion to add under Action Items, Action Item D, Cell Tower Direction to Staff, and removing the current item number C, holding council meetings in the community room, and then also adding Senator Moss. What did you say before the?
Um, I'm thinking before the consent agenda.
Between Items Number Four and Number Five on the existing agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Has it been moved in second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canaz.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried to approve the agenda.
Thank you. And I'm being kind, so I moved you up.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Administration. I'm Jeremy Moss, the state senator for Laker Village and have been the state legislator in Laker Village for the past eight years. Um, I will say this, you know, nobody would be here if they didn't care about Laker Village. The members, council and mayor, are volunteering their time to be here because they care about this community. The administration is here making a career out of it because they care about this community, and the residents are here because you care about this community. As somebody who has represented Laker Village for eight years, it's a wonderful community to be in. Um, and I served on the neighboring city council in Southfield, and we certainly went through our fair share of challenges and had certainly large personalities when I served on there. Uh, and one of the things that brought us together as a council was investing in our community. And so that's what I'm here to do, bring you dollars from the state so that you can debate on how to spend it in this community and invest in the people here and invest in the community in Laker Village. And so I wanted to start with some of the great things that we've been actually able to do in the state of Michigan and the state senate to come together as Republicans and Democrats to pass budgets using relief dollars from the federal government to direct back home here in Laker Village. So, uh, as was mentioned earlier, we did pass a $4 billion supplemental. The money is coming to Laker Village. Uh, and so I want to talk a little bit about the top lines on that. But last year, we did pass a balanced budget that Laker Village was a big winner in, and I worked alongside the state representative Kyra Harris Bolden. We're full partners in delivering for Laker Village. Uh, and some of you might have received our infrastructure postcard in the mail that talks about some of the money that is coming back home. And specifically, we delivered $548,602 down to the dollar, I can tell you what came, for roads here in Laker Village. Additionally, State Rep. Bolden and I worked with the administration and, and, and the elected officials here to get a $200,000 line item in a comprehensive state budget that was no small feat for Laker Village's storm ditch system to prevent massive flooding during a major storm event. Uh, and we know that you're utilizing those dollars to invest in the infrastructure here for the benefit of the residents. And then the governor approved of the application of a grant which we allocated for $232,135 to improve the drinking water here. So, uh, we've been able to take dollars that could have gone anywhere else and direct them to Laker Village. Uh, that was from last year's regular budget. Uh, we also passed, as was mentioned, I don't think the gentleman's still here, a $4 billion infrastructure supplemental budget. So this is a mid-year budget where we were taking the remainder of our, of our federal support to direct back home. I have the top lines, and hopefully in the future, I can come back and say what's coming here back home. But, I mean, this stuff really paid for a lot of things we depend upon, including housing and lead line replacement and drinking water and clean water infrastructure and remedy PFAS and helping out with parks and trails all across the state. Um, and so I can get some top lines on that. But we've been doing a lot in the state of Michigan dealing with housing and infrastructure across party lines, and that's something that I've kind of been leading the charge on. And some of you also might have received my other mailer from the state on some of the things we've been working on. Um, so not only roads, but it's housing. Um, and so there is an act right now in the state of Michigan called the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Act. And what it does is it allows a community... Should I pause while it catches up?
It just lost. It's being recorded, right?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
All right, I'll continue. I see myself right here.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I still see it.
So, uh, housing is important. You know, in the 1960s, Southfield and Laker was, was Michigan's fastest growing area since about 50, 60 years ago, and now 50, 60 years later, $10 towards housing renewal. Everything was new, new, new in the 60s, and now we need to give, uh, support to residents to be able to upgrade their homes. So there's an app called the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Act that communities utilize to identify some of its more distressed streets and distressed neighborhoods so that the city homeowners or home buyers can go to the city and ask for tax relief, property tax relief, as they take those savings reinvested into their home. Uh, due to certain metrics, Laker Village doesn't qualify for this program. But I am trying to make it so every community in Michigan qualifies to identify a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Act, including Laker Village. When I was on the Southfield City Council, we identified two of our, our areas in the city to help our homeowners get a little bit more cash relief so that they could put in the new roof that they've been waiting for, upgrade the siding, fix the frontage. Uh, and so I have a bill that's part of a bipartisan housing coalition to give local communities more tools to relieve taxes, to institute tax credits, to give tax savings to homeowners so that they can invest it into their home. I'm gonna have an op ed, I think, this week in Cranes, Detroit about it, along with a Republican senator that I served with, Brad O'Connell. This is a bipartisan package, and we'll share more details. But we're trying to give housing tools to our residents to have some, some dollars to put into home improvement. So that's infrastructure, and that's housing. I'll touch on maybe a couple different other areas that I'm working on. Still bipartisan. It's amazing we can get things, we can get things done. You hear about the fights and, and things from Lansing, but there are some glimmer of hope. Uh, and one of the things that, had it not been for the pandemic, we would have been on a roll with criminal justice reform. Uh, and so in the 90s, we were very punitive in our criminal justice. We realized that punitive justice doesn't work, restorative justice does. And so we have been trying to do everything we can to ensure that once somebody pays their debt to society, that we don't just keep them in this vicious cycle and, and prevent them from having opportunities to fully participate in our economy. So we have made it easier to expunge certain offenses. We have changed the age, the minimum, the minimum age for somebody to be sentenced as an adult from 17 to 18 makes all the difference. We don't want our 17-year-olds serving hard time with hardened criminals. Um, we want to give them a chance to right their course. And one of the bills that I have in this bipartisan effort to reform our justice system is allowing those who have had a criminal record but have paid their debt and want to get out of the system to have an easier time to get a job license from the state of Michigan. So before my bill was signed into law, I knew the state of Michigan could deny someone a job license just based on their criminal conviction. And it was kind of, um, a, a counterintuitive thing that we were training prisoners for jobs that the state knew that they wouldn't be able to license them after they're incarcerated. So we've reformed that definition of good moral character. You would be slammed as not having good moral character if you had a past conviction. Um, we refined that definition so that your criminal conviction in and of itself cannot be a reason to prevent you from having a job license here in the state of Michigan. Um, so we kind of like brought all political spectrum together from the, the right who wanted to ease bureaucracy and people getting job licenses, to the left of people who really want to see criminal justice. And so... I'll add that I wanted to help local communities continue with virtual meetings. I was a supporter of all that. We didn't have the votes for it, so.
While we're waiting, Jeremy, the timing is great because your $200,000 grant, the work started today.
Great. That's good to see.
Yes, you're so excited about it.
Yes, perfect.
Go ahead, because it's on now.
Go ahead. Perfect. So I, I, you know, I'll just close with, you know, there are changes coming to how, uh, there are proposed changes to how we vote everywhere, from how you register to vote to how your vote is tallied. Some of them, as our clerk knows, is just kind of counterintuitive to the processes. One of them, especially, you know, I'll give two examples so people can digest what we're talking about, because you hear a lot about voter suppression, but you, I want you to know the mechanics of what's being proposed. Uh, one of them is in order to request an absentee ballot. Uh, one of the things that was an early proposal was that you would have to include more information to prove who you said you were to get an absentee ballot application, including putting the last four digits of your social security number on the form. Now, clerk does not have access to a voter's social security number. It's not required to be in the voter file. So you'd be giving sensitive personal information to someone who has nothing that they're able to do with it, all in the name of, you know, voter security, but it, it, it doesn't do anything. And then on election day itself, so maybe you don't want to vote absentee, you want to go into the polls, uh, one of the earlier proposals was even if you signed in, you had your ID with you, nobody else named Jeremy Moss voted that day, I'm showing up, I have my ID, it says who I am, it looks like me, I'm there. Uh, if my signature in the poll book didn't match what the volunteer there says was on the file, they don't have to be trained in signature verification to be a, um, an election volunteer, uh, they could deny you a ballot that would count. They'd issue a provisional ballot, and on the backend, that might not end up being counted, even if you had your picture ID. Um, and so these are challenges that we're dealing with. The governor will not sign these into law to, to, to limit people's access to their ballot. Obviously, there are petitions out there that are trying to achieve the same effect. Uh, I have long been a proponent of trying to strengthen the petition process to restore honesty in the petition process. Someone who has a petition is not compelled to tell you the truth. And we're trying to disincentivize bad behavior, and I've introduced legislation to do so, to hold a petitioner accountable for if they are telling you a lie. You know, we, we would want to throw out their petitions. I mean, that would be the penalty. You tell someone a lie, you're caught telling them a lie, then the petitions that you've collected just won't count. Um, we've also tried to change the process by which a petition can be adopted by the legislature. Not all ballot proposals go to the voters to vote on. You might be signing something, thinking you'll eventually be voting on it. It's not always the case. A majority of the legislature can... Three-fourths, a broader consensus of the legislature in order to take the power away from the people to weigh on a ballot proposal and give it to the legislature. Um, so, uh, we're facing challenges in Lansing on voting rights, but I am on the front lines protecting everybody's access to their ballots so that they can participate fully in our democracy. Um, so that's my update, uh, and I'm happy to take any questions. I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure there's a lot going on in Lansing they might have some thoughts and ideas and questions about, and I'm happy to, to engage on that.
The neighborhood, what was the neighborhood something?
Neighborhood Enterprise Zone. And so certain communities, based on population, based on poverty metrics, qualify, and it's been a really successful program in Southfield. I had a bill signed into law to even strengthen it. So right now, a city can identify, uh, a neighborhood that's distressed, that needs a little bit more support for the residents, and the, a home valued at $80,000, frozen again, uh, home valued at $80,000 or less would have qualified for support. We bumped that number up to $120,000 or less. We hooked it up to inflation so that, so that we ensure that our, our lowest valued homes, our homes that are most, most challenged in seeking this support for investment, we're able to have the city to allow the tax, the, the homeowner to receive property tax relief while they make investments into that property. And so we're trying to make every community enjoy what Southfield and other communities have enjoyed.
So how are you guys working on the mentions? I'm familiar with it. In the tax zone, uh, like there's no way we would ever qualify. How are you working?
We, we don't want to have, we don't want to have, we want to have every community in the state of Michigan to be able to, to use and utilize this act. So no, no, no barriers to a city to participate in the act. Yep. So we got, we got this bill out of the senate. It is now in the House. Uh, we're supposed to have a House hearing on it amongst many other tools that we're trying to give to local units of government to establish credits, establish payment in lieu of taxes, other flexible programs that a city can utilize to partner with the homeowner, to meet the homeowner where they are. You know, maybe they, they're, they're, they could be house poor, you know, they'd be able to stay in the home but not able to make any upgrades to the home. We want to meet the homeowner where they are. How can we relieve you of some of these expenses so that you can invest in your property and, and bring the home value up? The home, your home is your most significant part of your financial portfolio, and, and as property values increase, you should be able to enjoy that. Um, and we want to make sure that you have the financial resources to, to invest in your home and make those upgrades.
If it was the past, we would, councils would have the liberty to choose the zones.
Yep, so council would have the authority to identify the zones, uh, and then the homeowner would be able to work case by case with the city treasurer, the city assessor, uh, to, to, to make those upgrades. Come back with the receipts, you know? You have to say, "I, I'm gonna do this if you relieve this." So a homeowner by homeowner could work with the city. Um, that's what we did in Southfield, um, in order to say, "Here's what I need," and then the city treasurer and assessor will say, "Here's what we can do." Right now, a city is not, does not have the authority to do that, does not have, and the city does not have the authority to create these zones to do so. So we're, we're, we're on the final cusp. We're gonna have a House hearing on these bills and hopefully get it to the governor's desk for her approval. I've, I've become well-versed with this Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Act. This is about my third bill now in this, in this act that we're trying to help homeowners with. Yes, yes, yes.
It works very well, though. Until it runs out.
Yes. Yes. But we want to, we want to give, we want to give some relief to folks that have overdue upgrades. Um, you know, I know this community is, is an established community. It's been around for 60-plus years, um, and, and it's taken its wear and tear, uh, and homeowners are looking for relief, um, to be able to make those investments, and we want to make it possible.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Does anyone else have any other questions for? Thank you.
Great. I'm around. You can always reach me at SenatorMoss.com. That's my state website for email for, we're still dealing with people seeking unemployment assistance. Um, I've got a whole landing page for that, so don't hesitate to reach out to me. Uh, I, I hope not to be going anywhere anytime soon, so I'm still here for Laker Village.
Thanks, Jeremy. Thank you. Um, now for the consent agenda. All riders with them, the consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the city council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed separately immediately after the consent agenda's approval in its normal sequence and the regular agenda. Do you have something you want to?
Oh, gee. Do you have something to add?
I'll make a motion to approve this.
All right. So whereas before, these cases would be handled in one court date, now the court has given them additional opportunity, sometimes two or three opportunities to appear, given unreliability with the mail, unfamiliar Zoom, although we still have an issue with this. Uh, so these are taking on longer than bigger, bigger entities like Chase Bank or, I don't know how the candy shop is, but, uh, there, those notices that are being sent to those facilities are not getting to whomever's necessary in order to respond to them. So nobody's showing up. So we're getting judgments against Chase Bank, but, but it's not registering any business. So that's been an unavoidable problem. Uh, the way, as Chief indicated, we're addressing that is by citing the onsite manager directly. That certainly gets their attention, and hopefully we'll solve the problem of these unregistered parts. Thank you so much.
I'd like to make the motion to accept the police department's monthly reports.
I'll make the motion to accept the police departments' monthly reports.
Any further discussion regarding it? Any further discussion regarding it? Karen, non-row call please.
Councilmember Miller.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor. Councilmember Conners.
National Security Report, okay. One point four, hold on. Couple of things, it says interviews have taken place from a DDA special projects manager position and it offers the may, start date of May 2nd. And then some DDA staff will be traveling to Richmond, Virginia, May 15th to 19th for the National Main Street Conference. Uh, who is going to that? Uh, how, does that come out of the DDA budget? What is the budget? What is the criteria and what are the benefits for residents?
Uh, those, it will be myself and the new employee. Um, we are, that is coming directly out of the DDA's budget. We did get a grant for one, uh, registration through Main Street Oakland County. And, um. The, uh, the overall budget for, um, meetings, trainings. Et cetera, for the DDA is approximately five thousand dollars. And those expenses are based on the DDA's, uh, tax increment financing and development plan. That was adopted back in nineteen ninety-eight when it was established.
If Jamar is covered through the county or is it?
I, I, I don't know if Jamar is, uh, going to be attending. He's, you know, he's a county employee, so that's their decision.
And. This thing look, I, I don't know, why were, why are you taking a brand new employees who will be here for less than two weeks?
Because this is a fantastic conference for her to learn a whole lot about. How Main Streets throughout the, or throughout the country, how they operate. Um, it, there are specific tracks for, um, learning tracks for new, new employees. Um, for, um, or new, I should say, I shouldn't say employees, new, um. Main Street managers and staff and board members. There are, um, tracks for emerg, like so emerging leaders. There are tracks for specifically for business development. There's a variety of things. Um, that I think are gonna be extremely beneficial for her to learn. And to become engaged with and to meet the entire Oakland County team. They will all be there. Um, we are a very close network of, of people. Um, and so I, it's important for her career development and growth and success in the city to attend this conference.
Okay, and what's the benefit to residents?
Well, the benefit to the residents is our goal, our overarching goal is to. Create a more dynamic commercial district and the, the more, uh, the more growth and success that we can bring to the commercial district. Will ultimately benefit the residents, um, through increased tax values and better business mix.
Is this something that you've attended in the past?
Yes. Yes. And it is, um, should we, should this, should the DDA, which we do, um, wish to move up, um, into our, um. Main Street Oakland County has three different levels. Um, they're in the process of rebranding those levels, but essentially it's, uh, select affiliate and associate. Should we ma, wish to move up to the select level, which is our goal. Um, that will open us up to a significant amount of funding opportunities, and it is a requirement. Of both Main Street Oakland County and National Main Street that representatives of the DDA attend. Yep. Any other questions about the DDA report?
I was gonna ask one question. So you said the paving work and the sort of work was happening on the eighteenth did, um.
I think that may have changed because of the snow.
Yeah, but like where, where whoever's gonna be maybe inflicted by it, did they get like a, a letter or something or not?
All residents were noticed that, this is the tentative start date. I mean, that's the date we're going for. With the big giant asterisks of weather depending, you know, are we kinda. We're, you know, crossing all fingers toes, you know, doing some eagle clothes over here, trying to make sure that we're gonna have good weather. It didn't work, so.
Yeah, I just, I was curious.
Yep. I would expect to see, um, continued mobilization though, uh, through the rest of the week and. For, for paving and sidewalks.
Well, actually started last week, so.
Yes, yes. I don't think.
We need to make a motion there.
Mr. McCallum, I'm sorry, it's, um, people sending a key in there.
I'll, I'll make the motion to accept the, uh, city's chair's report. Second.
To move in second is a, any further discussion? There are none. Row call please. Mayor Garrett. Yes. Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Conners. Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, um, dispersment reports. No, dispersment report, but eight.
How do those get a little wet?
Okay. Page one forty-seven. There was payment to Giffords Webster, one Cambridge gas main replacement for a hundred fifty dollars, and then East California gas main replacement. One thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars, and then Wiltshire gas main replacement, nine hundred sixty-nine dollars.
Those are coming out of bonds. We get bonds from, um, like the. Consumers Energy, any development project, um, they are required to give us a, a cash bond for their escrow. And so those are, those funds are actually coming out of those, those amounts, I'm sorry, are coming out of the associated escrow accounts for those projects.
City of Berkeley, Sacoma event, seven hundred fifty-one dollars and forty cents. What is that?
Once a year, the city, um, joins with, um, other.
South, South Oakland County Mayor's Association.
And they join together, there's like three or four communities, and then we pay our part. Berkeley pays their part. Berkeley probably paid the whole thing and we had to care, part back.
And that's just for mayors?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, VC Three Inc. laptops for council, seven hundred forty-seven dollars. It's right under, if you go down, one, two, three, four, under City of Berkeley, there's a fourth one down. VC Three.
It's under technology. That's, um, when they reprogrammed your computers, for you guys to get your computers.
Oh, that's not through IT, right?
No, it is, their billing now is VC Three.
Oh, okay.
That's who bills us now.
Okay. Um, page one forty-eight. Salaries, part-time Kelly Services, accounting clerk, one, nine hundred ninety dollars. Accounting clerk, one, twelve hundred thirty-seven fifty. The county clerk temp, twelve hundred thirty-seven fifty.
That is when we had the temp in here, um, after our employee was, um, our front counter employee was let go. We had to, um. Bring in a temp for a couple of weeks till we found something to replace that position. I think it was more than a couple of weeks. I think it was a month or two.
Uh, bottom of that page, SEM REO, grant reimbursement, nine hundred eighty-two dollars and five thousand three hundred fifty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. Building grants, some Rio grant reimbursement.
Yes, we have two grants, um, that we. We have been paying on their, um, zero percent interest grants. One was for the, um, AVX systems on the roofs, and the other one is for the, uh, lighting system throughout the building. And we have been paying on those. One of them is paid off, but, um, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars has, we have cleared that grant now. And the next grant, I think, has six more years on it, but it's interest-free money that we received. And they came in and replaced their lights and, um, did some work on our HVAC systems on the roofs.
Okay. And then page one fifty. Under downtown development authority, Faustina staff and DDA lunch, two hundred and fifty dollars. What is that?
Uh, the DDA typically buys lunch for its, uh, board members as a. Sort of a thank you for volunteering their time, so we bought them lunch. We meet, we meet at lunchtime, so.
Two hundred fifty dollars? How many people are on the board?
Uh, that was, well, there's nine people on the board. We did, we, it was.
And then I offered to pay the one twenty-five. Oh, you, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. I totally forgot about that. Thanks for bringing that up.
That's alright. It, the, the remainder went as staff appreciation for, uh, all of the administrative staff and the police officers that were on duty.
Also under dispersment reports. Uh, page one sixty-eight. Unity center expenditures. What, uh, what is that? Does that include footsware under general fund first line? We said one sixty or one fifty-eight?
One sixty.
Expense report.
Community room expenditure has to do with, um, some of the club's wages are taken out of there. Um, we also, some cleaning is taken out of there. There's also, um, anything that has to be done within the kitchen is taken out of there. Any of our permits are taken out of there from the kitchen. There's just some miscellaneous, anything to do with community room, if we need new tables, it's taken out of that account, um, anything that.
Okay. Um, auditing, auditing and accounting, and you talked about that, talked about that before, where you, um, had gotten extra help. That doesn't include the temp that's listed as accounting and auditing or that was.
That was a front counter person. That was not the, that was not counting at all.
Okay, well, it says accounting on here.
They, they were supposed to bring in that accountant person, but that's not what, that person was.
Okay. Um, and then technology, forty-five thousand dollars.
The stage room.
I'm same page, or. Yeah, same page, one sixty-eight. Same section.
Technology. Mm-hmm, that is all of our BSNA software, um, our, um, monthly, our yearly fees for our BSNA software are. Um, yearly fees for, um, IT right, that we have to pay. Though, it's all the, anything to do with technology goes into that account. We broke that out. It used to go into government operations, and we broke it up from government operations because we were just, um. Pay or, what's the other one? Yeah, metrics is under there. Okay. Revised. But not. Muni code is under there. Revised. All those are in there.
Okay. But, I just, I just wanna make sure that I'm looking at this correctly. What we're looking at for technology, this is what we budgeted for for the entire year, right?
Yes.
And then we're only use eighty-three percent of it, which will be our, uh. Fiscal year ends, what, June thirty?
June thirtieth.
So we still have two months to use of the budget that we already planned last year, right?
No, we're not gonna use it.
I'm just saying, but we had already, my point is that we already budgeted this.
Right.
Yeah, okay, so it's already been.
The website breaks.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that we're under budget.
We're under budget.
Point for the technology.
Yes, we got you.
And then last one is page one seventy-five. Repairs and maintenance, nineteen thousand five hundred, and then we went up to two hundred thirty thousand three fourteen. Can you remind me what that is?
Oh, those are, um, those are, the DDA is undertaking our own, uh, capital improvement expenditures. So that is, um, last year we did, uh, oh gosh, what did we do? We did some sidewalks, uh, we did some alleyway and, um, approach work, so that is, those are those expenditures.
So businesses don't have to pay for sidewalks?
No, not in the commercial district.
Why, why is that residents doing?
Uh, the DDA has the fund balance to do, to, to undertake tho, that project, that expense. Um, and it aligns perfectly with our development plan. So, um, and, and that's the guiding document for the DDA's, uh, activities. So that's, uh, we could do it, so we did.
So thanks.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the dispersment reports. So move. I don't have to make the motion. Make the motion to approve the dispersment reports.
Second.
It's the move in second. Is there, is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Row call please.
Row call. Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Conners.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes. Next, we have a couple of comments for items on the agenda tonight, and the speakers are limited to three minutes. So if anyone that is in the audience that would like to speak about anything that is on the agenda tonight.
Hi, my name is Nate Mainten. I just wanna talk about, um, the item agenda of moving this meeting to the community room. Um, and I feel that that's a fiscally irresponsible move to move down there. Um, I'm here, there's.
At the most, there were ten.
Yeah, I think at one time there were ten people here, um, and there's consistently been, uh, you know, over fifteen to twenty-seven or twenty-eight, I think, online, I saw. Um, you can't see behind me that long, but we do have plenty of empty seats, so there are really, uh, plenty of room here for anyone who wants to attend. Um, and so I feel like that's the most responsible decision to make at this point.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to, um. Comment about any items that's on the agenda tonight? Seeing one in the audience online. Alright, let's move on to action requests for consideration of approval. First up is a resolution establishing charter amendment ballot proposal language. I'm gonna assume that you mean for cannabis. Say that it's not in the language.
Uh, yes, sorry, I'm sorry about that, but yes, that is referring directly to cannabis. This is a result of. Uh, the discussion that was had at our last meeting on April fourth, um, so. Uh, this is the exact same, uh, draft charter amendment that, uh, you've seen before.
Alright, so I'm assuming that city attorney is not having this stuff.
Yes, please, sir.
So it was requested, um, a couple of times, there've been multiple discussions about ways to, uh, put this issue before the residents for a vote. To, as whether or not we want to allow cannabis establishments within the city, so. Uh, as it was discussed in the last study session, by recommendation and, and. Direction that the council intends to move forward is with a, uh, proposed charter amendment that would prohibit cannabis establishments within the city or later village. This works, uh, a couple of ways. One, it, uh, it not only does it resolve the issue, answer the question once and for all. Uh, whether residents want cannabis, it also is, uh, more of a permanent solution to the problem. Okay, once the charter is amended, to amend the charter, a difficult endeavor, so this, this would ensure that, uh, once the resident's voice is better heard. once the resident's voice is better heard, should they choose to opt out of the cannabis industry, that choice will remain and can easily be undone by other parties. And also, again, it also preserves the protections that are in place right now with the city having an ordinance on the book, on the books that identifies and establishes procedures for obtaining a license. As discussed previously, if there are absence of some sort of language procedure in place, in theory, cannabis industry could operate anywhere in the city without any city regulation. So this allows the remaining, the existing ordinance to remain in place, and it provides for a permanent solution, again, one way or another, at the voice of the residents. I'll move to adopt the resolution establishing the charter amendment ballot proposal language.
Or. Doesn't ask why, what it is about resolution.
I'm not reading that.
Oh, okay.
Charter amendment ballot proposal language to direct, to direct the city staff to board resolution to the appropriate approving agencies for inclusion in the November ballot.
To get into the August ballot.
I'm making a motion for that.
So is there a second for the motion that's on the floor? Is there a second to the motion that's.
Second.
Thank you. Number two, move the second and now, is there any discussion?
Yeah, so I made the motion, you know, back in, in January, I suggested we put it on the ballot because it will get as, as indicated as a, the ultimate decision from, from the residents. I know this was brought up for the last council and we were approving the ordinance. And while I think most of the, the last council felt that that was a good idea, because of the timing of everything involved, there was, there was no way that we could put it on the ballot without, given, given the minimal amount of time that we, given the amount of time that was necessary relative to the amount of time that we, we had. So I'm glad to have put this on the ballot because, as I said, I think this is the way to get the right answer, find out what the residents want. And as far as, you know, I know you're going to talk, I think, in a second about putting on your office ballot. I really feel like it should go on the November ballot because this is a big election in November. That's going to draw the most number of people out in order to get the best decision from the residents. We want to have the most people voting on this so that we truly know what the residents want and then go from there.
Any further discussion? Products will make more sense if we put it in the residents' house. Kind of a major issue. Plus, it moves this whole thing forward. If we're either going to move ahead or we're going to go not. We'll have a resolution in August as opposed to waiting until November.
If I may, Councilwoman Canes, under the twenty, two thousand twenty-two election dates and planning calendar for filing deadlines for the county and local proposals, it says petitions to place in the county and local questions on the August primary ballot needs to be filed with the county or local clerks by April twenty-sixth by five P M.
You got it ready to go?
And then the wording needs to be done by May tenth at four P M.
Yeah, I think it'll bring people, I think that would definitely bring people out in August. But August will definitely have a much lower turnout than, than we'll have for, for a national election in November.
Any further discussion?
I just, I just kind of agree because I think we can't really necessarily tell people about the actual proposal, am I correct?
Or. We could give them the facts.
But we can't, like, you know, so it wa, I don't think we will be able to personally give or like make sure that people will vote come out on, in August. But with the November election, we can ensure that people will come out during the election.
We have a responsibility to educate people. We need to do that at either, either time. So, you know, if they're just coming in November, just without being, we, we can put out educational materials. We can't advocate for a yes or a no. But we can put out educational materials, which
I mean, we can put that out, but I'm just saying we're depending on people listening to us or I'm just going to vote because I'm going to vote. You know what I'm saying? Like, it will actually be their concern to go out and vote. Like, nine times out of ten, you're not going to depend on a lot of people to come out to vote in August.
Something like this, it would definitely bring people out. Do we have a primary election here in August?
Of course you do.
So it's not, it's not an additional fee to have a special election or anything like that. Let's hold on. Roll call please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
We're voting out through November or just voting out? The motion on the Florida's board in November.
Councilmember Miller.
No.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up, we have an adoption of final delinquent special assessment role. Yes, Mayor, Council. The last, back in January, you had a public hearing on the delinquent role for delinquent water bills. We also have some trash pickup. We, there's also nuisance cuts that are included on the list. And we've had people paying them off. I think on our water, we were at like three hundred thousand at one time. We're ba, we're down to about a hundred fifty-nine thousand right now. That is still delinquent on the water. This is the last, the final delinquent that you have to adopt so that I can start pulling them from their people's accounts and putting them onto the tax bills. They will not be pulled until after the first week of May because I have, they have to roll my system over from the county so that I can start putting them on. So they will not be pulled from people's accounts till May, but we do need to have this approved. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt the final delinquent special assessment role.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Is there any discussion?
So hard to believe. Seventy-five thousand dollars of outstanding water.
And as I say every year, you're going to get your money back.
Right, exactly.
This company will give us our money back. And then they go after it. Exactly.
Well, a lot, a lot of people do that because they think they can, that it goes on our tax roll and they think they can deduct it off their taxes, which they cannot do legally anyways.
Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Roll call. Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor. Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So we removed holding the council meetings in the community room, but then we're going to replace that with voting on on the tower. City Attorney, do you have some verbiage that you would like to see used for that or just?
I think it's whatever, whatever the pleasure of council is, from the discussion in the study session, I gather that it was to the status quo. So I think you could direct staff to convey to the various organizations that have expressed interest in purchasing or contract out on the tower that were not interested.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion for the city administrator to alert simple A M T and Tower Point that we are going to continue with the lease as is, with the twenty-five percent term escalator and not make any changes at this time to our.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Roll call. Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. City Administrator report.
I, I just, I wanted to bring up, we did, I, I know at least one other council person may have received this other, this email about a cannabis-related listening session, I think is what they, they called it. I, I just want to let you all know, the city is not participating. I've made it clear to the, the organizer of the event that no, the city is not going to help you promote your event and that I've asked them to make it very clear that who's hosting the event so that there's no confusion, excuse me, um, but that we felt it was important to, that we keep the integrity of our cannabis application process in place and that we weren't going to be risking any implications of impropriety on the city's part by helping promote this event. So I just wanted to make you all aware since I wasn't sure exactly who may have received that information, so.
I guess I'd like to ask advice of the city attorney about council member defending that. I believe that, I'm guessing everybody's been invited to it. Not familiar with the event.
I honestly, the, today, when I got the email this morning, it was the first time I had heard of the event. It was when the community room was booked. It was just called a, a listening, a listening opportunity, I think, is what they told staff. So I was, no one was aware it was a cannabis event until this email. So it sounds like they just want to listen to the community.
I mean, again, cautionary for council if they were to appear. Obviously, you can go, don't engage in any discussions or deliberations that include. I guess my question. Probably not the best type of an event to be at, but you know, that's, I'll leave that to your personal choice. I, I guess my question was more along the lines of, you know, could that be perceived as supporting given vendor, which we don't want to do, as you said, we want to make sure it remains impartial and, and that the perception of, of the process should move forward is impartial. Yeah, I mean, again, it's hard for me to. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, it's an interesting, you know, concept, but, and I don't think it's really anything that looks like it's more geared towards industry employees and maybe what, what they intend to do with, with their unionization efforts. But I'm not. If council members go, I would just, you know, you can go and observe, but I wouldn't really take a position on anything and certainly not you know, advocate for it or anything.
Yeah, it's in the community room. I mean, it's a legitimate, it's a legitimate event that has been, you know, they're a legitimate rental. I just wanted to make you all aware that it is in no way, shape or form. Yeah, right. And I, and I, that was something I did ask them to change, make it very clear who's hosting and that it is not the Public Services Office. One, that's not what it's called. And two, that kind of makes it seem like we're partners and we're not. So I just put that, I just wanted to make you aware of all of that.
Can you send it to us when they make the change, the flyer, just so we know that they make it, or if they do send it?
If they, if they, if they, if they send me the change, I will absolutely send it to you.
And are you for the city administrator report?
No, I'd like to bring up something. We, we've had some discussions. There's been some complaints on C-Click Fix. One of them recently was regarding the eleven mile Santa Barbara intersection there where the foliage was clear cut. We did receive an email dated April fourteenth thanking the city for clear cutting that. It's been a problem area for residents that surround that area. It has been clear cut. The trees and shrubs are gone and then the stumps were just ground on April twelfth. So when the weather clears up, we'll get some, get cleaned, cleaned up and leveled and, and get it reseeded from there. But that brings up a number of other areas in the city that we're starting to get complaints about as well. And I, I did speak with Councilman Bruce Cantor about it. There is, I believe, there's five other sections that are city-owned property that are somewhat overgrown with bushes, some down trees. And we are, we do have another complaint regarding Wiltshire, Blackstone, Somerset of the Triangle there. And the residents are asking for it to be cleaned up. So I'm just looking for direction from council on how they would like us to handle those city-owned properties.
Sounds like a study session discussion. Do you guys agree?
Yeah, at this point, yeah, we should. Well, we probably have to discuss how much.
Clean it up, but you should have a plan for replacement. You just don't want it to be grass.
Or replacement and maintenance, so that's why.
Plan, right. We should have a plan, right? So we should have a study session about it. If you send out a, a doodle.
I did have something.
Get photos or dresses of the ones you're getting complaints about. And we know what we're looking at.
Right now, the one that shows up on C-Click Fix is Wiltshire, Blackstone, Somerset. And I've heard multiple complaints about that. And just figuring if we're going to look at that area as a second area to address, we might as well encompass all of these city properties that are overgrown. I mean, but they've been that way since I've been here for twenty-six years. So again, it's another area that would have to be maintained.
Yeah, the timing.
No, I, no, I agree with him. But they're looking worse. They have, like, they're spilling out over the fence.
Right.
What I'm thinking of is supposed to be maintained in a little dense area that they both.
So you're talking about Red River and Morningside?
Yeah.
Well, I think that was designated a butterfly garden or something.
Yeah.
Never seen a park. Even they don't like that dirt.
But the timing is good because if we, we have a study session, not next week, for two weeks. Where are we? We're in the eighteen, it'll be the perfect event. Because we're getting into budgeting season and obviously that's not only going to be effective budget, not only from the perspective of actually doing the clear cutting, but or, you know, whatever we decide to do as council, but we also have to maintain it. So it's good by the discussion.
And along those same lines, we're going to be discussing a tree trimming program throughout the city. It's something that's on our radar. I've talked to DPS about it. They, they can help out, but they are not equipped to do a true tree trimming program. So we currently have a contract with Dave's Tree Service and I'll be in contact with them to see what they can do for the city and then we can sit down as a group and talk about it.
Mayor, I did have one other, one other item I wanted to make sure I talked to you all about. I, we heard from Joyce Parker. The city administrator posting has, has closed. We have fifteen, possibly sixteen applicants for, for the position. Joyce would like to schedule a time to meet with council. She has suggested, and the, let's see, she suggested the third, fifth, ninth, tenth, and eleventh of May. The ninth, none of those are meeting dates right now. The ninth is a Monday. So you have previously said that Mondays are, Mondays are preferable. If we're going to do additional special meetings, we talked about it briefly in regards to the budgeting, budget sessions. So Monday, the ninth, may be a, a good option since you've all, like I said, indicated Monday's work. The third is Tuesday, the fifth is Thursday, and then the tenth and eleventh are Tuesdays and Wednesdays. Those are both within the first two weeks of the month. So we could say six o'clock. Sure. Okay. Not the fifth, okay.
Yeah, not, not the fifth, but yeah, the ninth works. It's a Monday.
Councilwoman Miller, would the ninth work? Councilwoman Canes, would the ninth work? Okay, thank you. Then we'll go with the ninth. I'll let Joyce know and I will invite her here for that day. Thank you.
City Attorney? SAKWA meeting was April 13th. Discussion about the Great Lakes Water Authority and all the money that Highland Park owes. There isn't anything, no action yet. They're hoping to resolve the issue right now. Highland Park, Great Lakes Water Authority is being made whole, even though Highland Park isn't paying them, but they're being made whole by the other member communities making up that difference. They are requesting that we write a letter to Governor, which I think that we should do, but I'm also concerned because our residents are getting hit on that. And then they're also getting hit on our 40% water loss. So you know, it's doesn't seem quite right that we're writing a letter to the governor about that when we haven't, haven't solved that problem yet and our residents are, are making up that difference. So I have some samples of the letter. Next meeting. Also, the 2021 Consumer Confidence Reports are out. I'm not sure how that's handled. They must be distributed by resident, to residents by July 1st. Eagle will impose fines if we don't meet the deadline. Each community has requested to send their published consumer confidence report and the completed certificate of distribution to Eagle and to Open County Health Department. And there's instructions and said that was sent to the community. So Senator Hill gets that information. That Scott McKee on here is the emergency contact.
Correct.
So I don't know.
I have not gotten a, I've not received anything.
Okay. All right. I will check with them. And then also the Eagle lead and copper testing samples must be collected and analyzed between June 1st and September 30th. Said the SAKWA will be providing sample bottles to each community and will be coordinating the delivery of samples to care down last for analysis. We encourage each community to collect the required samples by August 31st. SAKWA budgeting to pay for the lead and copper testing during 2023. And apparently this is a change in the system. They are, Eagle is requiring all communities report on the number of lead service lines that were replaced in 2021. So that's another report that has to be submitted to Eagle by April 30th. Although future use reports will be due on March 31st.
Go ahead. Have you received the rate yet?
No.
Okay.
Their, the May board meeting, they're going to be meeting with advisory committee of each authority to review general manager recommendations. May board meeting will present an overview of the 2022, 2023 budget. June, June board meeting, there'll be a public hearing on the budget and the final budget will be adopted.
Whole set of questions to bring up about that. Yeah. So it's, you know, Highland Park is in debt by about $55 million to Goliwa and about $23 million of that debt that has been made by Open Commons that we've been covering, averaging out to about $75 to $100 per homeowner. So was there any talk at that meeting for, for SAKWA communities? So what was happening, for example, lane? There's about 20 communities that have put their water payments. Escrow and not paying it as, as, and that's starting to happen in McCole as well, there are other communities in McCole. Is it something that SAKWA is talking about or something we need to consider?
They're talking, no, SAKWA would do it, but we're, they're talking about they didn't want to have any impact on the trial. But yeah, they said that the judge is very traditional and he believes that this process will work out this, you know, set way. So right, well, right. But, but also they don't want to impact it because Goliwa has the suit against Highland Park, but Goliwa hasn't lost any money. They've been made whole. So they don't really have a, a case to say, hey, you know, you need, they need to pay us and because because they have received the money. So there has been, there was talk, we're going to talk about it at the next meeting about putting in escrow and one of the members from another community said that perhaps if we put pressure on Goliwa that they weren't getting all their funding, then perhaps it would give them more motivation to, you know, get things settled. Cause right now it really isn't impacting, impacting them like it's impacting the communities and residents.
Right. Personally, I think we should at least consider, you know, sending a letter and saying, I mean, I think the, the water loss issue. I mean, I don't think there's, I mean, I think it was a separate issue. Then we're working on the water loss issue and it's unfortunate that we have such a high water loss that shouldn't stop us from you know, trying to pressure the state to do the right thing in respect to Goliwa because that ends up hitting us down the line. Like I said, about 75, like McCole is 75 to, their average is 75 to $100 per, you know, per household. So that's a lot of money every year. Um, were you done? So for infrastructure, I think, I can't remember if we had a council meeting since our last infrastructure meeting or not, but stop me if I'm giving a duplicate report, but the, the one big thing we talked about in our last infrastructure meeting, we had Ferguson in to talk to us about the possibility and, and the technology and how we would go about replacing the technology. So one of the things in the, in the capital improvement on was there was money set aside to replace all of the water meters. And there's some obvious concerns and questions about replacing all the water meters. But one of the big things that we wanted to do as part of that process was replace all the technology that wraps around the water meter. So all of the trans, there's basically, long story short, what we want to do is be able to sit in this office downstairs and be able to read all the meters in real time as opposed to having to spend 50, 50 days of time a year to have people driving around the city trying to get reads. It's a much less, it's a much more inefficient system the way that we're doing it right now. And so we, we had a presentation and all of our current equipment is compatible with wrapping just the technology piece around it. We don't even have to do anything in anybody's homes. The tenants that people already have are compatible with a centralized solution. And so we're continuing to look, look into that as, as an option. And the nice thing is, is that we, if we decide to do that and we put that centralized system in place, we decide, you know, next year that, yeah, we do need to replace the meters, then that hasn't, we haven't lost anything. So they're, they're setting it independent. So, you know, we'll, we'll look into that. And so that was the major discussion at the last.
I was getting locked in, of course. Any other committees, commissions? Any unfinished or new business? I knew it was going to be somewhere. I wasn't sure where it was going to come in.
One, one was, I guess, one is the city clerk. I don't remember where we left it, but I know last time we had some discussion about upgrading the salary. Tried to entice, you know, one of the prior candidates.
Yes, it was, it was done. Yeah.
So were there any results of that?
Nope.
Still no takers.
No takers.
And they were still saying that it's not enough money.
Um, we haven't gotten any bites on the, on that posting. No.
But my question is, can we circle back to the other candidates that we had, that we had made offers to, turned us down to say that we were increasing the amount of money associated with possession?
Ah, there was one I didn't reach out to. Did you happen to?
The other two already have taken positions elsewhere.
And then the other thing I wanted to grab was, was Dennis Dargo's issue. I started talking about it a couple of times earlier. I think I passed out your email and pictures. You know, as, as you discussed, you know, and I live in that area. So I, I am very well aware of the issue, which is, you know, coming out of Lake of Overland, going south to get onto the service drive and then go across to end up going east on 696 or on the service drive. It's like my father. If you're, if you're doing it during anywhere near rush hour, there are signs there that say keep intersection clear, but they are obviously not effective at all. And what Dennis sent us the picture of was another intersection, similar intersection where they put a mesh pad on the road. They do that in New York City a lot. And it's pretty effective there. And to me, this seems like a very low cost, you know, sort of potential solution to, to that issue. It gives residents kind of a something to look at to see that, you know, they shouldn't be on that, on that spot, which could hopefully open that up and make it easier for residents across them and reduce the accidents, I believe. That's one of the most accident prone areas of our city.
Yeah. Unfortunately, with the grade coming off the freeway and the speeds that they're traveling. I mean, we even looked at, when I was talking with the road commission about putting a light there, there's just, they're coming too fast. So I, I don't know where we would go with the light. We, I mean, that would be something we would have to look into, but it's not giving them enough time to see the light slow down because they're coming so fast off the ramp. I have not seen the intersection that you're speaking of right now. Yeah, I have not seen that.
So it's basically just putting a crosshatching over, over the intersection. So it's, I think you did that. You know, with the appropriate signage that, that car shouldn't, shouldn't be in that section.
And when I was reading for that, there's a stop. It's stopped. They have stopped spelled out in the street or there's a sign next to it?
Well, there's the sign that says, do not block intersection.
That's going to be an additional.
Oh, yeah, we have to, we can, and one of the ones. I brought this up many times over, over the last several years. Ten of a mile up to Southfield Road. I think there was something in 46 signs. So you get to the point where nobody reads any of these signs because it's so overwhelming. And when I brought it up in college a couple of years ago, we couldn't really think that there were all the road commission signs. But you know, Dennis's point was, you know, the, the don't block intersection signs on a post that's got three other, two or three other signs along with it. So we could also, you know, change the signage a little bit and maybe have a standalone sign saying, a whole sign saying, don't block intersection. And, and move those other signs further down or what have you.
So the other, the other thing that we could discuss, but it's going to include, you know, MDOT and the road commission is temporarily blocking off that bridge to traffic and funneling them all the way around the Michigan left. So that way traffic could not, if you were north of 696 or north of 11 Mile, you couldn't go south and cross over the 696 Bridge. So again, that can be a discussion, but we would definitely have to include other partners in that to see if that actually is feasible. I don't know if it is, but it's something that we've discussed in the past.
And to just kind of tag on to that, I, I know we should be hearing something soon from MDOT about their plans for that intersection. We know it's coming. I want 2025? They're letting this in. Well, there's, they're doing, they're letting, hold on, give me a second. They're letting the next 20, it'll be 2020 four. They will be doing some work at that intersection. I don't know how extensive it's going to be. We had a representative from MDOT reach out to myself and Scott Ringler like a year and a half ago, right? We're like, hey, what's going on? But so we could ask them as they get closer, you know, as we start, as they start communicating with us about redesigning that intersection. That's an awesome opportunity to address those safety concerns. And also address the pedestrian concerns because no one likes crossing that intersection either. So the gang will all be there, right, for discussion. So I think I've, and I did ask them about, I did, I did actually ask them about the curb for that and just said, hey, I don't know what your plans are, but we would like to get this fixed. So they go, we'll look into it. So.
Talking about the curb by Meadowbrook or the curb here?
The curb coming out of Meadowbrook that separates the on-ramp to the highway. We get a more squared off curb for people.
The signage is, there is good. There is one good bold sign on each side. It is a part of a totem pole of signs on one side, which is confusing. I, I've read one of those signs for the first time today in three years because we're always looking around. The sign is here and we're looking back there. But anyway, the message is don't block the intersection. The, the rest of the paragraph would be when the light turns red down the street and traffic backs up to the point, don't block the intersection. But that's a lot to communicate and the crosshatching basically gives a lot of intuitive cues. And so the one guy over here in the left lane that actually read the sign and stopped, people see why he stopped. They can figure it out. I mentioned in, in my email that there was a sign at the other place that said something to that effect. And I went back there. There is no sign there at all, but I figured it out. That's what it told me. And I thought it was in the sign. What you need, there's so much going on there. The exit, the merging of the traffic off the freeway and then
can't see.
I mean, we, we all, we all get it. It's complicated. But this is a simple intuitive way of communicating. If you see somebody stopping and you see all that crosshatching, I probably should stop too with the rest of them. It gives us more of a chance, at least when the light turns red down the block to get across. It's not going to stop traffic in between because they see somebody wants to cross the street. That's, that's not going to happen.
Another, another possibility, it can be a little bit more, more expensive than putting down the paint or the tape for, for the crosshatching, but you could also have you know, talk to the road commission about putting an overhead sign over those ones that says, do not block intersection or something like that.
Thank you. Is there any other unfinished or new business? Any public comment? And there was no one else in the other room, right?
No, there was not.
I don't see any public comment.
Jason Hammond. You are unmuted, sir.
Hi, can you guys hear me? Okay. Okay. At the last council meeting, there was a resident that said that public, during the public comment section, she said this about council member Miller. Karen is always willing to talk out any problem or any situation with the resident. Keep asking questions, keep looking and digging because that's how we are all going to be on the same page eventually. Because we'll all know the same knowledge and we'll have an idea about what everybody's talking about. Now, I've come to understand that council member Miller has been posting about city issues such as the sidewalk replacement project on the villagers' page on Facebook, but I personally can't confirm that myself because I can't see her posts. I don't know why. I assume that she has been blocked on Facebook, but I can't see her posts. So I'm wondering, how can we all have an idea about what everybody's talking about if we can all see what council members are posting about city issues on social media channels? I have emailed council member Miller twice about my inability to see her post on villagers and I've asked her, she has me blocked, but I haven't received a response yet. So my questions are, is the villagers' page on Facebook an authorized communication channel for the city? And if it is, shouldn't all residents be able to see what our elected officials are posting on that channel? So to that end, I want to encourage the city council to establish a formal documented communication plan for the city. So it is clear what communication channels are approved for communication between the city and residents and business owners. Who in the city is responsible for each one of these communication channels and what residents and business owners can expect from the city from each of these channels? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wants to do a public comment? I don't see anyone on Zoom. Okay. And I'm down to Mayor and Council. And, um, down to mayor and council comments, um, from the meeting on Monday, we, uh, talked about speed bumps, speed bumps, speed humps down Laker Boulevard and various streets. I have had the pleasure of going over three different kinds. Um, some of which probably knocked my muffler a little bit. Um, another one doesn't really slow you down whatsoever, and then there seems like there's some plastic ones.
Yes, they're reusable. Yeah, but sustainable. So we, we've gone through this discussion over the years and, the plastic ones have to be sticked to the ground, so there's damage to them. Uh, there, you hit them with a snowplow. I mean, it, it just really tears up the road. Even with speed bumps, you're looking at the degradation of that road from cars bottoming out, so. I mean, we've had Scott Ringler here before to discuss the, the issues with, uh, speed bumps and humps and, and whatever, so it, it's, it's tough to do. I know, I know there's complaints all the time about speeding. And that's where we ended up getting our speed signs from to try to, again, to curb or slow down people in the, in the neighborhoods. Um, I, I don't have a good solution for everybody except for, you know, if they call and make complaints about, uh, whatever intersection or, or parts of the roadway. We do try to address those on a regular basis. And, and we'll do the best we can to try to address anybody's concerns if they just, uh, send me an email, be happy to, uh, look into it.
When the gentleman came to the presentation, that was still the last couple, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, yeah, the, the, the thing that was pretty telling for me, I, I liked the idea of, of them. Wanted, we could afford it. But the, but you know, we get a lot of, I get, I do, I'm truly all, we get a lot of, uh, questions about that from, um, from residents, but the, 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 the key thing that, that was told us at that presentation was that you can't just put down one speed bump. You know, it's gotta be part of an overall, um, planned out system, because if you put down one, then with, all that's gonna do is divert the cut through traffic, for example, to the next street over.
Correct.
Street over. So it has to be part of a kind of holistic, holistic plan. Um, which, you know, means that we have to have the money to come up with being able to do a holistic plan. Um, and I guess, you know, you just made me think of other things, especially considering that it's. So, I mean, you know, it might be worthwhile to put in for, you know, one or two more of those radar signs. If we have more of them, we can deploy them on a somewhat more permanent basis.
If we were gonna do that, I would look at something, uh, I would upgrade them to more of a solar. Because again, we're, we've, we're going back out every couple of days to change out batteries. We've got to, you know, it's not bad to download the data because it's all wifi, but if we could keep those running with a, a, a solar power.
Do you think that it's, it's cut back on speeding on these streets? Because I mean, it, it's one to have the data and another to make it stop or to slow down.
I think it does. I think it, it lets people know how fast they're going. They get a visual. I mean, it's blinking, it's showing their speed. I mean, again, you're gonna have your, your rogue people are gonna see how fast they can go in a short period of, uh, a block or two, but, I mean, if you truly look at the data that we're getting, you know, we're, we're obtaining from these, I think the average speed is like nineteen miles an hour. So our, our overall speed is actually pretty low. Um, and you know, I, some people sitting in their living room watching a car go by, it seems like it's going a lot faster than it truly is, so. And I, I mean, I'm guilty that on my, my own street with kids walking up and down the sidewalk, you know, hey, he's flying by. Well, no, he's really not. Probably doing about twenty six, so, um, anyway. I, I, I think it helps. I think it truly does. And, and it gives us the documentation when we are questioned, we can show it. I mean, I've got all of the data for the last year saved on a computer, so if somebody wants to see it, I have.
I love rumble strips. So what I mean by rumble strips is at the beginning of the streets, if you get what I'm saying. So at the beginning of Laker Boulevard and twelve mile, at the end, at eleven, I mean, starting when you're coming into it, just to say, you know.
So I would really, I would truly defer to ro, uh, open county road commission. I mean, they.
I invited them to our next meeting.
There we go. So at, at times, we try to leave them about four weeks and then we, we bounce them around. Yeah, they, that's actually the primary place they, they've been. And it's currently right now on, uh, Laker Pillow right now. That's one. The other one, I believe, is on, uh, Santa Barbara and Roseland right now.
Any other council person would like to say something?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, we. Yes, I, um, I have a letter, an updated letter, ready to go to Ms. Price, so, um, I, I, her call all of her camera, all of her questions at once, so, um, the, the meeting was, uh, as we had discussed, I think she had a question about the notice. Um, the meeting had been noticed originally for the twenty eighth. Um, it was, uh, delayed because we needed additional, additional information, so it was re-noticed. I intended to send it out in the mail today, but I just couldn't get to the mailbox. It'll go out first thing tomorrow. Yep.
Um, and then just FYI that when a resident or anyone, uh, emailed all of us, I can't, well, no one should respond. All, and, uh, I respond and keep the city administrators on here.
Was there an option for her to come back in front of us since?
No, her, her case is, uh, complete at, uh, ZB, your role in the ZBA, there's no, um, option for her to come to, city council. If she would like to appeal the decision, uh, the ZBA made, she has to go to circuit court. I don't know. I can't get into, all, all, for the most part, all of our files are downstairs, so I can't get into the basement yet to go through our ZBA files. To, uh, to verify, to see if there was, something in those files, some, the paper files that we have, um, about a variance for that site, so, um, I.
She said they did have approval in the, in the email that she sent to all of us. She said.
They had approval from the city.
She said the, the resident across the street had approval from the city. Oh, she talked to that resident, I guess.
I think the, the important thing to note about, uh, uh, zoning variance is, it's unique to the, and correct me if I stated anything incorrect, but, uh, it's unique to the particular property. So what happened on another property has no bearing on what happens on, on this, this, this particular property. It varies based on the uniqueness of the property, um, and every property is different.
That's true, but Leon talked about setting, not setting a precedent, so.
There, there is something that comes in, um, that if, and again, I don't know which parcel or which, uh, residence property she's referencing, so I, very general, but if, let's say the city were to grant routinely a variance that was requested before for the same type of an issue. And then the decision for a particular individual was to not grant the request. There could be a case made that the, the city had acted in an arbitrary or prejudiced manner in not granting that request. However, um, as we talked about in this, as we're indicated, that it is, it is evaluated on a site by site and the criteria are spelled out. Again, looking, having looked back at it, I think the board came to the appropriate decision, given the facts of that, that, that site, that application. Uh, that being said, you know, you're right, if she, if she disagrees with that, then her next course would actually be with the circuit court.
Oh, yeah, recreation, so I've, um, it was one part where you said we're not supposed to engage with, uh, staff, but I, been approached by a gal that came up and she wants me to put something together with the recreation committee. So two things, um, I think when I met him, they're coming up, that particular committee that was put together, didn't we say they're, uh, June of twenty two, in all, that committee, they're two year run? Does anybody know on that?
Yeah, the term and date.
So, um, if they're gonna put another group together, maybe we should post that. There's gonna be more openings for that position, for that group.
Well, they, or they'll have to reapply.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's. Probably should be posted. Their terms are coming to an end, which should be something.
And then Suzie is the person that was hired. Will she be?
Yes, yes, yep.
I have a couple of things. Um, the water service line, uh, agreement that we have, do we get, we get money from them, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Yes, yes, okay. And, um, they just send the things out with our logo and their logo, and so it is a joint partnership and they. Okay, all right. A couple of residents that were confused about that.
I will say that it is a great service. You hear some gurgling, they come right out, you pay for absolutely nothing. Just like seventy two dollars a year.
Um, then the SGRX saves, I can't remember, do we get mon, money from them also?
No, uh, no money, no money from them. Um, but we do get the residents, that's the discount card that. But we.
No, so then why are, are they advertising in our town?
That's for the card, that's for the savings card. That, it's for the residential savings card, but. No, they put that in for, they put that, um, that graphic, um, together. I mean, they've been putting together marketing materials and, and, you know, they've.
That we have to put out? Because, because that was one of the questions I asked when they came, who's responsible for marketing this program? And they said, oh, we take care of all of that. So I was kind of surprised.
Yeah, they put it in there. Well, but there was something we'd also discussed with them was that we would be able to put it out in the city e-newsletter, as well as the print newsletter to help make sure that residents were aware of the program. They put, they put all of that information together. I just plopped it in the space available, so, um.
But do we, I mean, this, this is really kind of advertising a business. I know it's a, it's kind of a,
Yeah, that's.
I get that, but there's a lot of businesses that are for the residents that could do something. I, I, I don't know, so I'm just surprised to see this.
You said we did agree to that, when we.
Yeah. And we, I mean, we're, they're sending us, we. Council.
Well, I specifically asked about marketing and this is not them, this is not them doing the marketing, this is us doing the marketing. So maybe this could have been used for something else for the city. Uh, if we wanted to do this with other businesses, maybe we, you know, give other businesses an opportunity. Um, it said it's a service, but if we're not getting anything back from it.
Well, the city isn't financially getting anything back from it, but the residents are certainly benefiting from the discount. So I, I, I mean, I guess, I, that's, I, that to me was, uh, a fair trade off in terms of, I mean, we don't accept, uh, ads from, from businesses in the community or outside the community. But since this is something on which we're partnering, it's, makes sense to put it in there. They are also providing us with, um, we're, we're just waiting on the prescription cards. Um, we've got, we do have information that we will be putting out on the tables that they're gonna be distributing, you know, providing to us, so.
Okay, but we're partners. What are, what are we getting out of it as a city? That's what I'm asking. Yes, it's a service, it's whatever, but there's a lot of things that are like that. We're getting, we're getting, um, funding from, um, from the waterline company where we use the city logo and their, their logo. I mean, this is the same thing, so, you know, what do we?
What would you like to see? What kind of, what would you like to see?
I would like to see if this is a joint venture and a joint partnership and we're doing their marketing for them. I, I would like to see that we would get some benefit.
Like fi, a financial benefit? I'm just, okay.
We're even paying for part of the newsletter. I mean, these are, you know, expensive with color printing and whatever, so, you know, just. Something I said, but I, I only noticed it because that was a specific question I had for them, like about who's, who's doing the marketing, who's responsible for this.
Well, and I, I, they put together all of that marketing piece, you know, that, that's not something that, if I had tried to put that together, it would have taken me a whole lot of time, so. Right, right. So they, I mean, so they put together that marketing piece, that's all, so.
Does the city have a CRM, customer relation management system?
No, not really.
No.
No. I mean, we use BSNA as our, um, for CRM purposes. We have the capability of, uh, putting notes in there. We have, um, you know, building department more so than the other program, other modules that we have. Um, but there, you know, all of our permits go in there, notes can go in there, actions, um, projects. I mean, there's a variety of different, um, capabilities, but no, it's not a CRM, no.
That we communicate with residents, whatever. Talking about developing a communication plan, I think we probably need to look into something like that. A lot of our information is outdated. Names and, uh, you know, contact information and, um, can't get ahold of people and all that kind of stuff. So I think that's something that we probably should, uh, definitely look at. I just wanted to know if we had anything like that.
I, I know Salesforce is popular among, um, many local governments and like MEDC, the county.
I think that would be pretty similar to what, what I've. Different applications within the same system, so. Yeah, I, I had a couple of things about the, the, the last meeting, which I forgot to go, given the, given the time. But, uh, one thing I did wanna bring up, um, uh, last week, I spent a fair amount of energy, um, uh, dealing with, uh, a resident who had some concerns about the, uh, damage from, uh, CMS Energy gas line replacement project. And, and long and the short of it is, you know, he ended up, uh, sending me a list of questions, uh, that I responded, that I researched and responded to him, and Suzie and I were talking about it, but it makes sense to. Because there were a lot of homes that were directly affected, who are probably having the same questions, um, as well as other people who drive by those homes pretty regularly, walk by the same question, so I'll go through it real quickly. Um, CMS Energy gas line replacement work for this year is complete. There were five streets that had the gas line put in. Uh, San Rosa, Woolshire, California, Cambridge, Laker Boulevard, itself, six ninety six, um, which affected a total of a hundred and thirty six homes by that project. Um, the project, uh, being, or was conducted by, or is being conducted by CMS Energy, uh, contracted all work out of Caltz Excavating Incorporated, including the landscape restoration work, which is known as soft restoration. Uh, gas line replacement work was done on these streets in the winter, so that CMS Energy would be complete with all of their project prior to the city beginning, um, the paving work on those, on those same streets. Uh, Consumers Energy is consistently targeted after April fifteenth to begin the restoration. Uh, the ground needs to dry out and the future forecast has to be relatively dry for several days before work can be done. Uh, attempting to repair the damage without the ground being, uh, at the appropriate level of dryness will only induce more damage. Uh, work will commence just as soon as the weather prevents. The soft restoration includes cleaning debris from the area, grading, uh, raking and smoothing the area, hard过去的, and watering for two weeks. It's, uh, standard practice for any project related restoration, then the contractor is responsible for watering for the first two weeks, at which point the resident assumes that responsibility. Uh, other damage, uh, tree damage, sprinkler damage, et cetera, will also be repaired at this time. And all labor and materials for these tasks is taken care of by the contractor at no cost to the resident. Uh, the hard restoration, so that's things like sidewalk, sidewalk repair, road patching, driveway repair, um, is also the responsibility of Caltz, uh, excavation. Uh, this work is gonna be coordinated, uh, with twenty twenty two, uh, city construction projects, uh, that are commencing. Uh city construction projects that are commencing this week. Because of the excessive mess created by the multiple reasons and thoughts that occurred while the gas related work was being done. Um the soft restoration is going to occur as, as soon as possible, the goal would really be to get these streets back to normal as, as quickly as we can. Um that said, um please be aware that we know that uh with the subsequent paving of some of these streets this summer. Uh there will likely be, and most likely will be, some additional damage and restoration work that will be necessary. But uh we wanted to get the, get it, get the, the streets restored, knowing that there's still maybe. Be some additional restoration work that might be necessary. Um Calt's uh excavating is keeping a list of all restoration issues that they've noted, along with those concerns directly reported to them. Um Calt's is responsible for all the damage, so uh should you need to contact Calt's, uh their phone number is two four eight. Three three five one seven one seven, just to repeat, two four eight three three five one seven one seven, extension three. And to contact Consumers Energy, uh you can contact Sherri Payne, uh at Sherri Payne dot, uh Sherri Payne at CMSEnergy.com. And that's C H E R I dot Payne, P A Y N E. Um it's also important to note that we're holding a thirty-three, thirty-three thousand dollar cash bond from Consumers Energy. Uh they don't get these funds back until the issues are satisfied, satisfactorily resolved. Uh so if you have issues of any part of the restoration, once it's complete, um contact Calt's excavation immediately, but also please contact cities. So that we're aware um that there is a, a restoration issue. And then lastly, um the cost of the CMS project specifically is unavailable to us if we're not privy to that information, but. Um this project was completely funded by CMS and no taxpayer dollars are being extracted. Um and then just a couple of real quick uh follow-up questions for the administrators, um. So uh a month ago, we talked about uh getting an ethics ordinance as soon as possible, and I know we, Scott and I talked about that. And, and we're really waiting to try to get a, um maybe set up, so can we get that set up, or get a little poll out there for.
Yes, I'll, it was like herding cats the last time, so I'll shoot for, I'll look for Monday since we've.
Now, just, just so that we can get everybody together to have a conversation and start, start working on it.
And we said from Monday, the night that was for what, that was gonna be the conversation about the.
City administrator with Joyce.
So can we do a um?
I won't be available tonight, but Liam, Liam will be here for.
Leanne will be here. I just ask the questions, I just ask the questions, that's us, true.
Um then just a couple other questions, so um just kind of curious, is, is the backfilling for the water program, is that started yet, or?
We're working on that.
Um and then there was also, um I know for the water loss investigation, I think last week you were gonna send Crush out to check the. Uh emergency connections to verify that was closed, did that ever happen?
Yes, he did um check that and it was closed at the, um our, but he wants to. Um he's trying to get a hold of Southfield to see if they have a, a place, another place that they might have a connection that, to us that we don't know about. So he was getting ahold of them.
Oh, one, one other really minor thing, I had, I had an elderly resident contact me, um and uh, what's that? I had an older resident um contact me and uh, you know, she, she says that she watches the. The city access channel a lot and, and there's, there's always like web addresses, she doesn't do web addresses. And I know the phone number hasn't changed, but she has requested that she put the phone number on there as well, so making sure for the call to say.
We used to be able to have stuff at the bottom of the um screen, if I'm not mistaken. During council, oh, never mind, because that's when we taped it and then put it out, so never mind, got it, can't do that anymore.
I don't really have a lot, I just wanted to, I'm just glad that we were able to get the ballot proposal language uh straight. Um we all agreed, unfortunately not, but uh on the actual date, but I'm just glad we were able to. Get it on the ballot and hopefully we can just depend on the residents to make their decision, so. So.
There's nothing else, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Do you have your second public comment? I really just don't wanna leave.
Things that we need to talk about.
I'll make a motion to uh.
Many adjournments have a wonderful evening.